Father, we thank this day you give us, Lord, thank for your almighty blessings you give us, Lord. Lord, we pray special for the leaders of our country and our state and our county, Lord, we pray to be with each decision that we make, Lord. Lord, just be with us, give us our sins and what we fave, bless these things in thy name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
All leading order. Mr. Moore.
Yes, sir.
Martin Kowick?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I'm Martin Kowick, construction. We've, uh...
We are at our right side of the chair.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Might not have been the right man, but Wendy.
I understand. I'll just put a little thing in these packets for you that just kinda, kinda explain what we do as construction managers. So, a little history on us, we've been in business now for fifty-five years in, uh, in North Alabama area. But, uh, we started branching out about fifteen, twenty years ago, doing the whole state. We actually have a job over in New Albany, Mississippi, we're doing right now as well. But, we, uh, as construction managers on, on public projects, we feel like we bring a lot of baggage to the table because we're there to represent the owner. And we watch the project like it's ours. And, uh, we try to work with the owner, and on the jail project, we'd be working with you, the sheriff and architect, try to get, number one, the building that he wants and needs inside the budget that you can afford. And then, inside the timeline, uh, to be built. Uh, we, we built Franklin County Jail about, gosh, it's been ten years ago, I guess now. We did Winston County Jail, we've done DeKalb County Jail, Butler County Jail, Limestone County Jail, and we did the security electronics at Mobile County Jail. So, we've got a lot of jail experience, particularly with the size jails that y'all are talking about doing. We, we've worked mostly with, uh, you know, a hundred and fifty to three hundred bed jails. And I would think that y'all are gonna fall in that range somewhere like that. But, uh, anyway, what we do is we, we work with, like I said, we sit down with the architect while it's in the design phase and try to advise them on what's the most expensive way and less expensive way at that time to build. Sometimes building with, uh, laying the block in place for the jail is cheaper, and sometimes getting the precast modules cheaper. And it really just depends on what part of the state you're in and kinda what's going on economically. Right now, I'll tell you that, that brick masons and block masons are in short supply because there's so much construction going on. So, you know, if I had to guess right now, I would say probably precast modules would be cheaper. But even if you did precast modules, there's gonna be a lot of masonry on your jail. But we would price it out both ways, but, and then advise the architect on which way we think would be most economical to proceed. Uh, the next thing we do is try to help you with, we break it down into bid packages so that you don't have one guy that's over the whole thing because there's not a lot of people in the state that are big enough to do a project like this, particularly locally in a small community. So, we break it down into smaller bid packages so that your local guys will have a shot. We generally have a mechanical, I mean, air, air conditioning, electrical, plumbing, security electronics, site work, and then what we call a general works package, which generally takes care of the concrete, the, uh, the masonry, the roofing, all the, all the other stuff that you see inside the building. But that takes the markup of the general contractor off of all of those trades, which helps offset the cost of having a construction manager. The next thing we do is we try to save you enough money through value engineering before the bid, after the bid, and during construction to, uh, to more than pay for our costs. If you've seen on some of the, the projects I put in there, how much we save those owners, and those are very quantifiable numbers. Uh, I've got that little range of service in the, in the left-hand side, and that's just in the nutshell of everything we do. And then the other sheet is this little spreadsheet on what jails are running, what we think they would run based on the ones we just finished in the last few years, about how many square feet per bed that you generally have in jail. I don't know how many, do you know, have any idea how big the sheriff, what, how many beds he's looking at?
Three hundred.
Three hundred? Well, three hundred bed is gonna be cheaper per bed than one hundred beds because when you get up to three hundred beds, you can, you can spread the cost of your administrative area out a little bit more because you're gonna have to have intake, alleyport, kitchen, all those things, no matter how many beds you got, you gotta have those, those items in your jail. So, if you could build a three hundred bed jail, you're gonna be a lot cheaper per bed than if you're just doing a one hundred bed jail. Let's see. You can see on the spreadsheet kinda the size of jails in the communities around you. Another way you can save costs on your jail is if you can minimize the amount of what we call isolation cells. If you have more dormitory space, that's cheaper because you don't have, you know, you can have eight guys in it, or four to eight in one dormitory cell versus one or two in an isolation cell. Well, each one of those cells is gonna have a stainless steel sink-toilet combination and, and mirror, and those things are expensive. So, if you can go to more dormitory space, you cut down on the number of your stainless steel toilets per, per inmate. Uh, you know, you also can cut down on your showers, uh, in the, in particular dayroom areas. Another thing you wanna do is you don't wanna have, uh, direct supervision, meaning you got a guy in the, uh, an officer in there with them all the time. You wanna be able to remotely monitor them from a control station that, where you can open and shut the, the doors to their cells, you know, remotely, and that cuts down on the number of left, about labor you gotta have to run the jail because, as we used to always say, paying for the jail is the down payment. You know, running it, operating it is the real money. And if you design it wrong and, and coming out of the gate, you're gonna cause yourself to have a higher, uh, operations cost. So, we try to work with you guys and the sheriff on keeping all of those things in line because, number one, y'all pay for it. Now, he operates it and runs it, so he knows what he needs, but y'all know how much you can afford. So, that's why we try to work, when I'm, when I'm doing a county project, I try to deal with the county commission first because y'all are the purse strings and y'all are the decision makers. And, you know, I'd be happy to talk to the sheriff, but I didn't wanna go around y'all to talk to the sheriff when, when y'all are the ones who are gonna be charged, basically. But you can see, we've done, uh, well, Limestone County Jail's two hundred and eighty-eight beds. We just did a forty-eight bed addition about three years ago to Limestone County. What happened is they, at Limestone County, it's grown pretty quick. The sheriff decided he needed more isolation cells, so that's, that's all we added, was just isolation cells. Uh, DeKalb County Jail, uh, at two hundred and forty-five, we did, well, we did Limestone County Jail with, uh, concrete masonry block, DeKalb County and Franklin County, we did with prefab modules. And Butler County, we kinda did a combination, uh. They, they didn't have enough money to do the amount of jail they needed to do, so we were starting off with a much smaller jail. Well, there's a, a county commission in, uh, Dufunyac Springs, Florida, that voted to build a new jail, and they were going to all precast modules. They ordered the modules, had them built, had an election, got a whole new county commission, and the new sheriff decided to build the jail somewhere else, and they hired another architect to design that jail. So, they had a bunch of prefab jail cells sitting out on the lot in, uh, Mendon, Louisiana. Well, we do, we found out about it because we do business with those people, and we were able to talk to Dufunyac Springs and buy some of those modules half price. Now, I'm not gonna say that's always gonna happen, but that's one of the things we do to try to help you save money if we look around and see if there's something we can find. And that, that, that actually bumped up the number of beds we were able to get for Butler County, so that kinda have a combination of preset cast cells and concrete masonry cells. Now, look at this one here. It tells you, first page tells you who we are, you know, started in nineteen sixty-four. We got over nine hundred facilities under our belt. Uh, I just kinda went through what we do before, before construction, and working with the owner and the architect, and trying to, we're gonna try to break it down into bid packages that are gonna be the most conducive to your area and what local subs you might have, and what we think's gonna get you the best price on the jail. We will have onsite supervision whenever there's workers on the project. We have a man that's here, uh, managing the project. He's in his trailer, he's out on, on the job site, he's walking the slab because we wanna make sure if you pay for it and it's on the plans and it goes in that building. Uh, one of the things we do during the construction phase is we take pictures, pictures, pictures. We, we, uh, can't think of the word right now. Anyway, we have picture evidence of everything going in. So, if anybody ever comes back to county commission and says, "Hey, I heard they didn't put any rebar in those walls," we got evidence that, that it's in there. Uh, we monitor the, the workforce on the job to make sure that people are staffing the job correctly. Uh, we're constantly looking for ways to save you money during the project. If, if during the middle of the project, we see something that we can change a little bit to save you money, we're gonna come to you with it, and, and if it saves you money, you're gonna get it. We're gonna do it that way. Whereas if you go just a standard hard bid and you got one guy out there, if he sees a way to save money on the project, he's gonna get the money, not you. So, we wanna make sure that you, as your representative, that we get all the savings back to you. You see there's pre-construction value engineering here. We got a, got a few items we did, you know, I just put a, three projects on each one to kinda show you an idea of what we were saving on the front end. And then during construction, I kinda talked about that, how we manage it, and we provide the quality control. Uh, all the submitted data, all, we, we do the weekly meetings with the contractors, uh, and then we do the monthly meetings with the architect and the contractors to make sure everybody's on the same page, that we're keeping the job, the budget under control, and schedule under control. Uh, but we're also looking for, you know, more ways to save money. If you look on this post-bid evaluation and value engineering, this is where we came in after the bid and tried to save money, you know, before the job started. And then during construction, we try to minimize change orders. And if anybody comes in and tells you they're gonna build you a job and there's not gonna be any change orders, you need to turn away because there's gonna be change orders. But we found that change orders are generally, for the most part, they're owner-driven. It's when y'all get started on something, you decide you wanna do, add something else. We try to eliminate as many as possible of the, um, change orders caused by something missing on plans. We try to take care of all the gray areas. We go through the blueprints before it goes out to bid and look at everything. If we see a gray area, we try to make that more black and white so that we know when bid that we've got the right number because contractors, when they see gray, they, they add money. Or when they're hard bidding, they take money away and then add money later once they get the job. So, we try to eliminate all of that that we can. But if we see a deductive change order that can offset an additive change order, we're gonna bring that to you and try to keep the, the job within that one, two percent, you know, once it starts. And, uh, but like I said, we are always looking for ways to save you money while we're on it and while maintaining the, the quality that you're giving. I won't read all this to you, you, y'all can see that, but this is just a little kinda flow chart of how jobs work when you have a construction manager, you know, how we...
What is your, uh, company fee based on the contract price?
Well, it, it's, it's not, it's, it is and it isn't. We look at how much longer it's gonna take because I got a guy out there, so labor's more a function of time. So, you know, I gotta cover the cost of that guy. And, and a, a small project, a, a percentage on a small project doesn't cover that guy's cost like a percentage on a large co- project will. So, we'll do a, when we know how big the jail is, and, you know, it's gonna be basically a percentage, but we'll, it's negotiable once that we get a better idea of how big the project is. But generally on jails, it's gonna run five percent, uh, just because jails are complicated. There's, there's a lot that goes into them. But we would, we're always willing to negotiate the fee once we have a better idea of what the total cost of the project is. Uh, we went down to, uh, Cusa County and did their courthouse renovation, and it was only a six hundred thousand dollar project, and it was three hours away. So, that one took a lot more, as a percentage, it was higher, but as a total, it wasn't, wasn't out of, out of ordinary, you know?
So, y'all have, with Winston County and Franklin County, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and Winston County was a hundred beds, Franklin County's two hundred and sixteen beds.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then with the price, the difference was two thousand nine and two thousand seven?
Right, let me get the, uh, what the price was at the time they bid. All right, and Franklin County's jail in two thousand seven, it was eight million five oh four, is what the bids came in. And that was for two hundred and sixteen beds. And then Winston County was a hundred beds, and it was seven million three forty-nine. But another thing we had at Winston County is we had, uh, we had to do the courthouse above it, the courtroom. And so, what that, that caused the price despite because...
Yeah, I've been in Winston County.
Yeah, and they got the, the courtrooms and all up on top, but the, but the state fire marshal made us put what they call an interstitial space between the jail and the courtroom. So, basically, you had a whole floor that was empty, that was just the fire. And we had exhaust fans, so if there's any kind of smoke that come up, came up, it would blow it out without letting it get into the courtroom. So, that was a special condition that drove the price of that project. But, uh, it, it was a hundred beds, and it was, the cost per bed, you can see on it, was a lot higher than these others. Uh, but, but part of that, like I said, is because of that big interstitial space that we had to do.
Well, makes sense, I know, I didn't understand that part there, did it?
Yeah, and we tried to get out of it, and, uh, P H and J, those architects on it, they, they tried to get the, work it out because it's a fully sprinkled building, but, uh, they were gonna have none of it. So, we had to do all of the, it, it had extra air conditioning, extra fireproofing, a lot of different things. It's a three-story jail, but it's actually a four-story building.
Well, in your opinion, should, you know, about the price of jails, should we spread out, build a jail on one level or go up?
Well, a one-level jail can be two levels where the housing is. You know, you stack your housing, so, but as far as the floor that the sheriff and everybody's on, one level's generally gonna be a little cheaper in jails because if you get into the fire situation, and, uh, so if you go up four floors, you gotta have that interstitial space again, so...
And that's a lot of money.
It is, and it's a lot of money for a lot of air, you know, and that, that's really what you're getting out of it. But, uh, your housing areas, like where your jail cells are, you'll have a, you know, a jail cell and then a balcony and another set of jail cells and a pretty tall dayroom with big glass windows so that they can...
Yeah, you can see.
Monitor, yeah. But the building itself is, is a one-story. Now, it'll be probably an eighteen-foot eve height, you know, so it'll be taller than a one-story building, but not as tall as a two.
Russell would be considered a one-story, wouldn't he?
Yes, sir. But if you, if you go around and you see it's two stories in the housing. Another thing we have, you know, you've got a, part of the pricing on jail too is how you separate your female inmates from your male. You know, a lot of times that's not as, an economical thing, but it's a, a necessary thing. So, you gotta, you can add cost to it. But with a three-hundred-bed jail, you could probably set your pods up to where that wouldn't hurt you as much. But if you can't afford a three-hundred-bed jail now, and you can only afford a two-hundred-bed jail, but you think in the future you'll need another hundred, go ahead and build your kitchen big enough to handle three-hundred beds, even though you, you might not put all the kitchen equipment in there for three-hundred, but build it big enough so that when you add that extra, those extra beds, you don't have to go back and add more holding areas, more medical visitation. Uh, another thing that makes your operations cheaper now is doing video visitation instead of having to have a, a deputy come and get them and take them up and, um, smooch through the glass. You know, they can just look at the TV screen and smooch.
Compare the price of the staffing of a jail. Say you've got a, our jail was built in the late seventies. Uh, say we built the same size of jail today that we had then, how much would it cost more to staff that jail today than with the technology?
I would think it'd cost less, but you know, for every position, you gotta multiply it times five because your jail's running twenty-four, seven, and three sixty-five. So, you know, if you've got a guy in your control center and a guy walking the floor, if you got two control centers, you got two guys in control centers, and then one person, what they call a walker, just, you know, going around, so that's three people. But that's actually fifteen employees because you got first shift, second shift, weekend, and all that.
Well, we got that now, you'd have to say the same thing now.
Yes, sir.
Well, what I'm saying, how much more, we could say we got a, our jail would build for a sixty-something or seventy?
Well, with the low-circuit televisions and all now...
So, but it's gonna, how many more times would it take to build a three-hundred-bed jail and staff it today than a sixty, seventy-bed jail back then? I mean, just that's what I know you can't.
Right, um, well, a three-hundred-bed jail now is gonna be, well, it's gonna be pretty close to what this Limestone County Jail, that's two hundred and eighty-eight, you know?
Twenty-one million, around twenty-two, twenty-four.
Yeah, it'd be twenty to twenty-five million dollars, yes, sir. Uh, and, but there again, you can mitigate some of that by having more dormitory space than, than isolation. And if you can have a full pod where you got one control center that can watch four dayrooms, that cuts down on your stacking.
That's what sheriffs looking at.
Right, and that's, that's kinda how the, uh, Winston, uh, Franklin Counties is laid out and the DeKalb Counties. And, uh, I think now Franklin County only has, they've only got three sides of one of those pods, so they could add on. But if you build it kind of a straight line, you, you tend to limit how many dayrooms you can watch from one control center. Uh, but I would, would, like I said, this means...
Limestone County's limestone, what fucker likes a limestone county?
Gosh, it changes every day right now, it's, we're up to ninety-two thousand right now.
That's three times.
Yeah.
But I would say half of them are from I sixty-five east because Huntsville has moved into Limestone County and Madison has moved into Limestone County, and they don't even know they're in Limestone County. They, they can't find a courthouse to buy tags, you know, because they're all, they think they're in Huntsville or Madison, but they're, they are, but they're actually in Limestone County. I think they're projecting us to be a little over a hundred thousand here in the next cen- uh, census. But now Franklin County is more closely to y'all's size, wouldn't it be, or?
Yeah.
Well, we are, so I'm sure, I'm not sure.
It's about thirty thousand, thirty, thirty-two thousand.
That's about what we are, so we're...
Yeah, and it's, it's between two hundred and two hundred and fifty beds.
Yeah, Colin said limestone's growing.
Yeah.
He said that's the problem.
It's growing fast, and, um, you know, we just finished the new Athens High School, which is a fifty-five million dollar high school, and it's, it's gonna be busting at the seams, you know, they've moved in and they, there's not a spare classroom in it. But it's all coming, you know, the whole state's growing right now. That Toyota Mazda, there's gonna be a lot of tier-one suppliers because, you know, Toyota's got the plant over here in Union County, Mississippi, so you, they're gonna start kinda drilling in.
We're supposed to be in the middle of this stuff.
We're twenty-two now, and you got, you know, a lot of automotive coming in. But like I said, if you can't, I mean, three hundred's a lot of beds for your size county, but I don't know what your, what your inmate type, uh, demographics are, I mean, what kinda crimes you're looking at. Uh, but if you can kinda get through your design to where you've got options on bid day that if this is too high, you can drop back to this, but have it designed where you can add on in the future without having to...
I hope they just, uh, jails, none of them are, none of them include a judicial building.
Winston County had the judicial building, Limestone County had the sheriff's office, so you know...
Figure it in with the cost.
Yes, sir.
So, you got, is this, this Marion County, is this just something twenty-twenty, like two hundred and twenty-five beds?
Uh, I would say two twenty-five, two hundred and twenty-five beds, uh, be close to what you... Uh, Marshall County's right now looking at adding right around two hundred beds to what they have. Now, they're doing an addition, they're, uh, wanting to go home to jail.
Yeah.
Which, uh, you know, if you've got the, the real estate...
Yeah, yes, sir.
A new jail's gonna be cheaper than an addition because of just how everything goes together.
Addition's come out of question for us.
Yeah, well, it is for a lot of people. Old Franklin County Jail, if y'all remember where it was right downtown, that thing was a mess, and...
You ever deal with, you ever deal with building a jail under court order?
Have not, no, sir, we try to get in there before the court. If you build one under court order, you can throw these numbers out the window because it's gonna be closer to four hundred dollars a square foot because that judge is typically, you're gonna build his jail instead of your jail. So, if you can build it, Limestone County Jail was that close to being under court order. They went back over to Judge Smith, the federal judge in Huntsville, and they told him, "You've got one year to get this thing designed and under contract, we're gonna tell you what you're gonna build." So, that, they were able to do more dormitory space. If you do a federal judge's jail, you're gonna have almost all isolation.
But you would be with it from the very start, like the architect?
The, the quicker the better for us. If we can be in a week before the architect, that suits us fine. But if, if, we'd like to be in when they get started because what happens is they...
Because the more money they make, the more money goes in their pocket, the higher it goes up.
Well, and the problem is they'll start down the path of design, and we may start looking at it and say, "Hey, it's cheaper if we go down this path." Well, then they're gonna want redesign fees. Whereas if we're in there right from the start, we can keep them from going down that path. We can, we can get them going down the path that, that we need them to for cost savings. But they, they wanna, whenever we try to get them to change the design because of, of cost savings, well, they want extra money to change the design, which I understand because it's extra work for them. But if we can get in early enough, we keep that from happening because we jump out in front of it. And I don't, I don't think, you know, of course, architects and contractors are like cats and dogs, but, uh, I don't think a, a lot of times they're necessarily trying to bump the price up as much as they just wanna design what they wanna design, and, and cost doesn't come into the play. I mean, and, and whereas we're more practical-minded, we want, you know, they say think outside the box. We try to think in the box, and the box is the budget, and we try to stay in that box for you. And, uh, you know, it's, it's a team effort, it's got to be a team effort, and, and it's easier to be a team effort when you're both starting at the same time. Well, we've got a school up just north of Nashville that they hired us first, and then we helped them interview the architect. So, we've done it both ways. But I'd be happy to come back and talk to the sheriff and y'all together, and, you know, I'll be down. I don't know what your timeline is right now. Of course, I'm always at the County Commission Association, and we can, we can talk down there. But, uh, I need to come back over. The only thing I've got coming up is a high school graduation in two weeks and a senior trip. So, I just had a college graduation last week, and then my daughter's getting married, and that's gonna cost more than college.
You're making the job.
I need that.
But that's time to get you.
Well, unfortunately, it doesn't really work that way, you know?
Well, I appreciate you coming, do you wanna have any more questions that's, uh...
I said, we're doing job in New Albany right now, and from Athens to New Albany, it's, it adds ten minutes to come through Hammonton versus going through Tremont and coming out.
Well, we'll certainly, uh...
Y'all building a jail in...
No, sir, we're, we're building the, the free jail, they're calling it a high school. Uh, or actually, what we're doing over there for them is, uh, they're wanting to build a new high school, but before they can build a new high school, the Board of Education told them, "We gotta make all the roof leaks go away, get all the air conditioning fixed and all the other schools." So, they've got a middle school, uh, elementary school, and a high school that they're all putting brand-new roofs on them and new air conditioning units and putting new windows in two of the buildings. And once we finish all of that, then they're gonna... And once we finish all of that, then they're gonna do a bond issue for a high school. Which I understand, you, you gotta get your other jobs up to, I mean, your other facilities up to code before you go build something brand-new for just the high school.
Well, I like the way you think you come for us first. I like that.
Well, I mean, I just think that's the, the proper way, you know? I learned that in Limestone County. I don't know if y'all ever remember old Stanley Menefitty that was the chairman up there. But he and the sheriff are always like this, not from a personality standpoint, but just from a budget standpoint. And Stanley said, always talk to that county commission first because they gotta pay for it, you know?
That's true.
But sheriff's gotta run it. It's gotta be safe. It's gotta be good for his men. So it, it, there again, that's a team effort for y'all.
Yes.
Right, well, I got my board in there, email me if you need me to come back. I'll be coming through the neighborhood quite a bit.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank y'all for your time. I'm actually going over to a bid opening right now in New Albany.
Good luck.
Thank you. It's gonna be stormy. I hope this people show up.
Is there any other, nothing more on agenda? Is there any other, uh, over there? I hear much of a jury. I'm looking, I have sex. I'll, I'll, I'll say hi.
Don't forget to like and subscribe to our YouTube channel at www.youtube.com backslash forty-nine county news TV.